Do you all get one of these?
I got one, but I didn't bring it in. It was in my pocket.
Oh, it must have been in my pocket.
Yeah. She always does.
And welcome to the planning board meeting for, what is today, November 6th, 2019.
Shocking.
Yes, we're getting right along. I have a couple of announcements here. Did you get the email? Okay. We did receive an email yesterday from council for the applicant in the American Tower. I'll read it. This email is sent on behalf of American Tower in connection with its application to rebuild the wireless telecommunications tower at the Girl Scout camp property. American Tower respectfully requests that the chairman of the planning board's review of its application. American Tower is coordinating with the town police department on modifications to the design of the replacement facility to accommodate the town police communications equipment. As soon as materials are available depicting the revised design, we will supplement American Tower's application and request that the planning board resume its review at that time. So, we will accede to that request. So, if anyone has that in mind, or things that they were hoping to hear from tonight, we'll have to tune in later for more. Also, I just want to remind those who may be speaking or wishing to speak, we've modified our policy of permitting speaking by the public during work sessions. Previously, we had allowed the public to make limited comment on pending applications during work sessions, reminding all that work sessions are a time for the applicant and the planning board and the planning department to go over applications. And we had not permitted, even my policy not to have council speak, but that's been modified. We will permit council to speak at the planning board work sessions, but we would ask that council and anyone else who may be speaking, and again, remember, it is not a public hearing. It is just an opportunity to give us information about facts on the ground that we may not know about, environmental conditions, traffic conditions, things that, you know, we might not necessarily know. And so, if you do, if someone does wish to speak at a work session, we ask that we keep the comments to two minutes or less. Finally, folks, we will have at the next meeting Gordian Rack and Lauren Stoller, thank you, from the town, will be here to discuss proposed changes to the solar energy, the town's solar energy law. So, at the risk of looking like our fourth grade teacher, I'm going to pass these out and ask you to take a look at them, and next week we'll have a discussion about that, so that comments may be made to the planning, to the town board about our opinions, and also, I understand, the other boards are also going to be commenting. So, once again, you're getting homework, so.
No, I didn't.
I think, are there enough there for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. Our member, Ed Krug, is not here tonight as a personal matter, is unable to attend. So, in his stead, we have done a couple of matters that Ed was going to be covering. Kathy's going to pinch it. So, all that having been covered, I will look for my agenda, which I, oh, okay. The first matter on for today is EEB Farm LLC subdivision review. So, Eric, is that yours?
Yeah, we received a final subdivision application to subdivide a 20.6 acre parcel on Spring, located on Springs Close Highway, an A3 residence zoning district. Okay. Sorry, I had this loaded.
Yeah, it was up, Joanne.
Huh?
It was up.
Yeah, I don't know where it is.
Oh.
So, it is located right here. This is Montauk Highway where it meets Springs Close Highway, and the parcel is this odd-shaped one, just where the railroad, just to the north of it. You have a field that fronts on Springs Close Highway. These are all parcels, and then there's another place where it meets Springs Close Highway, and it covers this whole area here. This was a pond that was put in the reserved area as part of the application, and proposal is to subdivide it so that you have three lots, one, two, three, and four. This is the reserved area with the pond in it. Then you have a long, narrow reserved area that comes down and incorporates that field on the end. So, this is a 3.2 acre reserved area with a pond in it, and a 7.7 acre long finger agriculture reserved area. And there's a 20-foot wide access easement coming in off of Springs Close Highway here that would serve the four lots that are proposed. The yield map indicated a yield of five lots, and since the open space map only proposes four lots, the applicant is not subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, is not required to provide a lot for affordable housing in return for a bonus unit of density based on the, based on the reduction in the density that's being proposed. The town code mandates preservation of prime agricultural soils on lands whose preservation would implement the town's comprehensive plan. The site contains two relatively small areas of prime agricultural soils. However, the size, configuration, and location of these soils do not lend themselves to a basis for creating an agriculture reserved area that's conducive to farming. One area consisting of a narrow sliver of prime soils will be included in the agricultural reserved area. The second area will be located in the proposed natural reserved area and in the area of lots three and four. This finger-shaped area is approximately 190 feet at the widest point and surrounded by three other soil types that are not described as being prime agricultural soils. So, the board, during reviewing this during the preliminary application, did not require preserving 70% of the prime agricultural soils in one ag reserved area because they were scattered and they weren't, it just didn't lend itself to it. The town's CPF plan recommends that the existing fields along Springs Close Highway be preserved and that development of the parcels be coordinated with the parcels to the east and south. The two reserved areas have been designed to facilitate this. The CPF plan also recommends that a trail bicycle easement be obtained along the Long Island Railroad right-of-way. The applicant has not agreed to provide this. The map is essentially the same as the preliminary map that you approved, and they revised it to include the notations that were required and condition two of the preliminary approval. And they have obtained health department approval for the map. Based on covenants and restrictions, we recommend that those covenants and restrictions be submitted to the file. The common driveway details are located on the final map. The town engineer did comment that those under separate cover, and I believe that he, they were essentially the same that were on the preliminary map. By memo November 1st, he says, "I reviewed the proposed common driveway as well as the turnaround. Both are required by the, are required by the town code." Now, he finds the engineering elements to be satisfactory. The applicant got fire department approval for the preliminary map in November 24th, on November 24th, 2014, and the fire department at that time said that the project was adjacent to public water and fire hydrants that provide an adequate water supply for firefighting purposes. Given the length of time since that approval, the planning department recommends that an updated letter be obtained from the East Hampton Fire Department. We also recommend that an easement over the, that the easement over the agriculture reserved area that will be granted to the town be written so as to allow for, or at least so as not to disallow for, the potential for a 20-foot wide right-of-way for a bicycle path in the future. In the map of, I don't know where this disappears to.
The GIS?
Yeah. Try, this one here. Okay. It coordinates with, this was the map of Pantagol Hill, and we got a reserved area across the back of that, and they actually did provide for an easement that allows for a bicycle path. And then this, this parcel, this is, here is a reserved area in another map. So, we, if we could eventually provide something across the back of here, we would have something that would continue most of the way from Springs Close Highway over to Abraham's Path over here. It's just be a little bit, there's a road in between, and there's just a couple of parcels. So, we could potentially maybe develop a bicycle path in that area. So, if the applicant's not willing to grant it, we would just like the easement to be written so as it would allow for that potential sometime in the future. And the planning board granted preliminary subdivision approval in 2016. There are no substantive changes to the map. Therefore, it's recommended that the board waive the hearing on the final map pursuant to 220, 2.13 of the town code.
Is the applicant, oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone have any questions for Joanne?
Before the applicant speaks, I would like to make my disclaimer that the applicant's representative is my son-in-law, Andrew Strong, and I feel that I can be fair and impartial in evaluating this application, so I choose to sit on it.
Andrew Strong, good applicant. I don't have too much more to add. The final approval has been, is essentially the same as the preliminary approval that was before this board. There are, you know, two, the two areas of reserve have been set aside, and we're looking at this moment to move forward as quickly as we can to, through the final approval process.
What's the objection to the bicycle path?
Objection to the bicycle path? I think, I don't know specifically, but I know that the applicant feels that they don't want to get, that they value their privacy. You know, it backs up to the railway tracks, and they, they've been very clear about their objection for a number of years throughout the process.
Because my understanding is it went back and forth, that at one point there was a willingness to have the bicycle path, and then that was turned around, so.
There's a clarity in the applicant's feeling about the bicycle path, that he is not interested in providing it.
Any questions for the applicant?
I'm not sure who the question's for about the reserved area that, where the pond will be. Is that going to be owned by a property owners association? Who's going to be dedicated that?
The whole property, at the moment, is owned by a single entity, and for the foreseeable future, it's going to be kept in a family, and.
So, it'd be a requirement of the final subdivision that the reserved areas, the reserved area be dedicated to a nonprofit organization, that it be dedicated to the town, or that a property owners association be formed. So, I guess that's what your question is, which of those is the applicant choosing to do?
And is a, if that's a man-made pond, I don't know what's involved in maintaining it, but it may limit your takers.
Mm-hmm.
Not sure the town would take it, and not sure a private not-for-profit would take it if they have to maintain a pond.
Right.
I read that you're correct. We need that information before we approve it, so.
Well, I mean, I think the applicant's last choice would be to form an HOA and do it, but they're happy to undertake the obligation to maintain it. So, if we can work out a scenario where we can get it to one of the, either the town or to a not-for-profit organization, that would be ideal. If we can't, then we'll have to form an HOA and go that route.
Well, there is going to be a common driveway, right?
There is a common driveway.
It's not a dedicated street that's going to be.
Nope, that's right. There's a common driveway. Yep, and that will have to be maintained as well.
Among the property owners?
Yes.
By private agreement.
Yeah. I believe there's a common driveway agreement that's been filed.
Any other questions for the applicant? Kathy?
Just the, the ag reserve, is that going to be a standard agricultural easement where some of the boilerplate ag easement?
That's what we had in mind, if the town attorney has any other feelings on it.
I think that's, I think that property's actually suitable for nursery stock.
Right.
So, we wouldn't want to do the enhanced easement there probably.
Right.
For a real crop home, because that's, that's the only thing, I think, that the language in the aggies is probably the old, might be, we might want to.
I haven't seen any proposed documents specific to this property yet. I think we, he would probably present us with something, my office, we could review it, share it with the board, and, you know, really, anything that you wanted to propose being controlling in that document that the applicant was amenable to, we could, we could add or subtract to make it appropriate.
Okay. If we could just be in the loop on that.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and that, the pond, you know, I don't, I don't really know what that story with that pond is. Is it a, do we know much about it? Is it a?
Yeah, the applicant proposed it in preliminary and some of the set of plans for it, and they created it in the meantime, and.
Okay.
It's a man-made pond. There it is.
Doesn't look naturally occurring.
It's too symmetrical.
Very spherical, right? Meteor.
Not of this earth. In Zab's absence, Kathy's pinching.
Okay. So, I mean, I think Joanne's memo, you did a great job. I thank you for your specificity. I think the applicant is, I think this is ready to move on. If we can get an updated letter, I think, from the fire marshal, just because it's been five years, and we don't know what's happened in those five years, that would be good. If you would consider preserving the option of the bike path, even though that's not what the applicant, without, just not preclude it from the easement language, that would be great. And the covenants restrictions should be submitted to the file. And, you know, we'll have a little back and forth, I guess, on the ag easement and those requirements in there, so that'll be good. But I don't have any other comments, but I think this is ready to move along. We've been at this for a while now. This is almost, it's almost five years, which is a long time, so. Anyway, those are my comments.
Are there any other comments at the table?
Yeah. As far as the bike path goes, I do think we talked about it at one point. One of my concerns for this application, and certainly going forward, is this happened on another, on another parcel where you can't construct a fence if you leave a bike path. And if we created this ag easement, which is already pretty odd and very long, I know there's not a lot of clarity right now in fencing laws in general for ag properties, but the town has been working on it or talking about amending it. And if we were to provide that bike path here, which I'm certainly not opposed to, but I think the two things are almost, in the current state of affairs, mutually exclusive, because if you can't fence in, you know, a property, especially in this type of area, it's not, it's not farmable. So, I think the bike easement makes more sense in a different type of reserved area. And I think that that was one of the reasons why we changed it back, because we did talk extensively about it. So, if we put any language in, I think we should make sure that if it allows for a future bike path, which I wouldn't be opposed to, that it doesn't prohibit, you know, constructive agriculture in the meantime while the bike path doesn't exist.
And I wasn't necessarily indicating, suggesting that it have specific language about a bike path, just that.
But it not precluded.
Most of them say no structures.
Right.
Or they specify which structures can go, so just that the language in there is.
Absolutely, and I'd be open to that language, as long as in the meantime, if this bike path doesn't exist, they could do everything necessary to, you know, use it for agriculture, which is certainly our intention. Speaking of that, the ag easement that, we did talk a lot about ag easements over the last five, six years, and the old, old version was updated slightly. So, Jamison, I think if you talk to John Gilneke, he'll know, it's the one we've used the last couple of times. It's not an enhanced easement, so all types of farming are allowed. It just provided a little more clarity than the one that goes, you know, many, many years back. The pond also, we talked a lot about, and we went back and forth and had a lot of questions. I know it was a really deep pond, so we found that acceptable. I just want to make sure that you do find out who it's going to be dedicated to.
Sure.
Or, you know, form the HOA.
Yep.
Otherwise, I support the application.
Any other comments from the board? In that case, it's just, planning board, the consensus issues. Planning board should advise the applicant as to whether a copy of the Suffolk County Department of Health Services approval listing the required covenants and restrictions should be submitted to the file.
Yes.
I'm sure we all agree to that. Planning board should advise the applicant as to whether an updated letter of approval should be obtained from the East Hampton Fire Department. I think we all would feel that. The planning board should determine whether the easement over the agricultural reserved area will be granted to the town, that will be granted to the town, should be written so as to allow the potential for a 20-foot right-of-way for a bicycle path in the future. That seems to be the only area of some controversy, so.
I'm not opposed to it, just as long as it allows for all other ag uses in the meantime.
And I'm sure we wouldn't be opposed to it if, provided it was a bilateral discussion, right, in the future, you know, not a unilateral one imposed on. Yeah.
It almost looks like there's a 20-foot.
Right-of-way there.
Right-of-way there. Is that, is that what that is?
It's the railroad.
The railroad.
The railroad. Oh, to the.
Light Parade.
Oh, Light Parade.
Oh, that's the Light Parade, right?
Which runs next to the railroad.
Yeah. It'd be a good place, oh.
Oh. You sure about that?
Maybe not.
It's all I'm through.
All right. I think, is there any objection to this proposal by the department?
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea. It keeps us flexible. And finally, the board should determine whether to waive a hearing on the final map, and there was already public comment on this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would recommend that you hear.
Yeah, I don't think we need that again, so. All around, okay. There you are.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to the next item, I should have mentioned in the opening remarks, last time out, we had a conversation about the Springs Fireplace Road carter study, and I wanted to thank you, Joanne, for the very well-done, comprehensive memo, which will be passed on to the town board. We had a lot of things to say, and you sharpened our focus, so thank you very much.
That's not easily done.
Not with us. Okay. All right. Next item on the plate is Round Swamp Farm, Lot 3 Extension.
I just wanted to point out on EEB also, that this is the 300 Pantagol Place where South Hampton might be building a hospital. We're requesting that that bike path be continued.
Right.
And then obviously, this is where we are right now at Town Hall.
Right.
So, obviously, we could allow that in the meantime, but this is, there's two properties in between, and then as Joanne pointed out, that would be uninterrupted if you did have it, so just let you know.
But the two properties are developed and.
They are, yes.
Do not have a bike path on them at the.
That's correct. So, Round Swamp is just before you, because they had to illustrate the phases. You'll recall, we had the wrap-up memo at the last meeting. So, basically, it's pretty simple. Phase two is building number two. We've also prepared a resolution for this evening.
Oh, great. Boy, we're so efficient.
Very good. And Kathy, this one happens to be yours as well.
It does, it is mine.
Although, I'm sorry, I should have asked, do you want to say anything on this one? Just here in case we have any.
Yeah, so, I think this is ready to go. You know, the applicant has been, we just really needed them to identify the phases, and they did that, so I think that was the only thing that was really missed. We would have approved it last time, but that, we needed this. So, I think we're ready to go with this.
Any other comments from the board? All right, so, is the application ready for approval?
Yes.
Yes, all around. Very good.
You want to read, should we do the resolution?
I will if I can find it.
You want to do it now?
Why don't we?
Why not? You came out, get a resolution.
Then he can go home feeling good.
Okay, so, in the matter of the application of Round Swamp Farm, Extension Lot 3, Site Plan Special Permit, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-143-112.5, Site Plan Special Permit Approval, with the, excuse me, conditions of approval as stated, and additional conditions and time limitations as stated in the document. I have read the resolution and move for its adoption.
Second?
Second.
Any who's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Hi, thanks, Drew.
Thank you, Drew.
An American Tower.
I think you got to step out.
Next item, the next item on the plate would have been American Tower, but as I read before, the applicant's asking a German, therefore, we move on to Freuen 291 Springs Fireplace Road, for which I am recusing myself.
Okay, we'll see in a couple of weeks.
Send me a, send me a note when you're ready.
Okay.
Okay.
Like a text? Will you have your phone?
Wave like crazy.
Previously, there was an issue regarding a scenic easement. I think that issue's moot as the easement appears to have been filed. However, it should be shown on the site plan. There's a small change to coverage. Calculations should also be added. No elevations for the wall were submitted. The wall's about five to eight feet in height with a four-foot chain link fence. The ARB has commented and deemed them incomplete. You should determine if you want to send comments to the ARB. There was an issue of whether or not a variance would be required for the wall height. I will send a letter out to Ann Glennon regarding that. And then it appears that the parking is adequate based on the most recent site plan approval. So, really, the majority of the issues on this application deal with ARB purview. Again, this is a retaining wall being replaced and added on behind One Stop Market on the way to Springs, so most of it has to do with the aesthetics of the wall, and they did submit some materials. Again, this is really more the purview of the ARB, but if you do have any thoughts on an appropriate design, you can take this opportunity to send them comments, because, again, as I said, it is incomplete still in front of the ARB.
Okay, I forgot I'm taking over because Sam's recused, so. Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to make some comments? Forgot that for a minute.
Susan Briarly from Dewey's Planning. So, yeah, most of the issues are ARBs, so we've been trying to work that out with them. Happy to comply. We've given them a couple of options. They can't seem to make up their minds, so they want to see it in the field, which we're working with the contractor to put some swatches up, so that they can kind of go out and take a look at it. As far as the four-foot high fence, that's required by code materials. I'm not sure what's required. I've asked a couple people to look into it for me, so I haven't gotten any answers back yet. We're happy to do whatever they want. The wall has been there. Variances, I'm not sure we need a variance to replace an existing wall, but if we do, we do, and we'll get one, I guess, but it's necessary because of the grade change. What else do we have? I think that was about it.
Yeah, I mean, really, just changes.
Yeah, it's very minor, in fact. You know, what brings us here is the fact that they didn't think it was important enough, big enough that they needed permits, and they started doing this without asking, and well, it caused a little bit of a mess. So, we're trying to get this done, so we can do this in the spring, and we'd like to move it forward as quickly as possible.
All right. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Briarly? So, I am also taking this application. So I am also taking this application for Ed because it's his application. I think one of the questions that came up in terms of the potential variance, and I'm glad that Jameson is back, because, was that the height of the retaining wall, there are some definitional requirements from how high the wall can be from the grade. And then with the additional 4-foot fence, and I understand you're saying, I've seen it, you know, I've been there, so I know, I know what it looks like. But I just, I think that came up in our discussions, and maybe, Jameson, if you could clarify some of that, maybe that would be helpful.
If I can work it out with the state code requirements, if we can step the fence back so it's not actually on top of the wall.
That would probably be.
And that way, it's not part of the structure, but it still provides that barrier. Because I'm not 100% certain based on the state code that we actually are required. It's just a good idea to have something up there.
Oh, yeah.
It's not a public pathway, which is when the code kicks in, from what I'm reading anyway. So I'm trying to get some clarification. But if I can move it back and do something like a split rail fence, it won't be quite as there in your face.
It won't be.
I was not going to say ugly, but ugly. Yeah, you know.
Well, that is something that we recommend, and I know that you've come to ARB a lot when I was on the ARB board. We recommend going and working with the Building Department and the Building Inspector. She can give you guidance as to how far back you can step it back.
Right.
We look at it a lot with pool enclosure fences, but a lot of times, someone will have a retaining wall, and then they put their pool enclosure on top of it.
Right.
And while it may provide the protection, it violates the code in terms of height because of how we define where you measure, and then, and really, how high the ARB even has the authority to approve. So I just spoke up at the pre-meeting because I heard this 8-foot thing, and then, and then a 4-foot, and I just didn't want you to go down the road with this board, then thinking all you needed was ARB. And going back to ARB, they look at the dimensions, and then they say, we can't even, we don't have the authority to approve this. Now you need CBA.
Right. So when the engineer went forward and did this, and told him we needed a barrier, I think he was thinking, like, for vehicles? Because this is a pretty substantial. It's embedded in the concrete. It's steel poles. I think it's overkill. I don't think we're going to have too many vehicles or pedestrians, you know, rolling down the hill. We need to stop, so I think we can find a softer solution to it.
And you can, and Ann Glennon, she's, she's great with.
Yes, no, I actually tried to get in touch with her today.
Okay.
And I think I have a, I think I have a meeting with her tomorrow at 8:30.
Oh, well, that's great, because we were going to ask her to take a look at it on our behalf, too, to give, to counsel us about that. And, you know, generally, I agree with the ARB comments. I mean, I think if we could get something in there that looked a little more. I don't even know what to say.
It's a big wall.
A little softer, I guess, is a good, is a good term. Softer is a good term.
How do you feel about the, the, you know, pressed concrete with the gray or the tan stain? I mean, it's supposed to look like natural river.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's, that would be a big improvement over what's there.
Takes away from it, I think.
Yeah, I think that'd be a big improvement over what's there. But, and we are allowed to have some input on this, but obviously, it's the ARB, it's, it's their.
Unfortunately, it's not that easy to give them a color because it's a combination of four colors that can collide.
Yes.
It's, it's not, it's not just one thing.
Have they seen these samples?
They have, yes. This is what they've commented on.
And they don't like any of these.
No, no, they didn't say they don't like it. They said they want to see it either.
Oh, they want, okay, they want it in situ. Yeah, I get it. Okay, okay.
Better if we can arrange for it.
Right, right. Okay. I also want to thank Eric for digging up the scenic easement because that was some, a question, you know, that.
Well, we couldn't find it.
Well, we have it now. It's attached to my memo.
I went to Planning Board, I went to the Town Attorney's Office, and I went to the clerk. I didn't think to go to the assessor.
Well, there you go. So we give Eric high marks for his investigative powers. Anyway, so I think we just need to revisit the requirements of the easement and where it's supposed to be, because I think that, if I recall correctly, there are some, some things in the front along the roadway that shouldn't be there. So I think we need to review that and make sure that everything is.
It is a standard easement. It says no structures and shall remain in its natural state.
The one thing I was curious about, about the easement is, well, I know that it's grass, and they have picnic tables there.
Yeah, I mean.
But it appears to me that the curving in the parking lot were put up, right up against it. And isn't that not a structure that needed to be 10 feet away? Which is why when I couldn't find the easement, I said, well, this is a good opportunity to file the easement and make sure everything's 10 feet away. But I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And I mean, just if I were looking at it now, I'm not adverse to the idea of having the lawn and the landscaping, the picnic tables in the front. I think it looks nice.
It's part of our culture.
Yeah, the easement, the way that it's worded, it is, it covers all of that as well as the woodland that remained to the north.
Right.
And it's a standard easement that says remain in natural state, no structures.
Right. So it's, so right now, you're, you know, it's not in compliance with the requirements of the easement.
Might want to go to the Town Board and see if they'll amend it. Because I don't think it's, I don't think it's such a bad thing. It's not even thick enough that it was, it clearly wasn't established as like a natural buffer that was going to block everything out from the road.
I think it's intention, when you go through the planning file, is to prevent any further means of egress onto the property. They just didn't want a second curb.
Right, right.
These people seem to do that for some reason, yeah.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we saw, we've seen this other cases.
Yeah, it's, it was kind of overkill for what the purpose was. We could have just put a covenant on it.
Right. And, and anyway, so, but at present, it is, it's not in compliance, so that has to be addressed.
Yeah, and I, for me, because it's, I can read, and I agree with Eric's interpretation, that the language is standard. The description is so, so specific, and the hand-drawn, you know, attachment, which I, you know, was acceptable in 1984, you, you just can't match it up. We need to see it on here exactly how it impacts everything that's already.
Right.
You know, been presented.
Okay.
So that we can fully understand.
Definitely, this was the engineer's plan, so it wasn't, this isn't the surveyor's plan. So we need to have it put on by the surveyor and then transferred to the engineer's plan.
They'll be able to interpret this, you know, very long description.
And I don't know for sure that that sketch is actually all of the boundaries of the easement. It might end at that front part. But when you read and it says, you know, running vents.
Right, right.
It looked like there was enough that it wasn't just that triangle, that it was all those changes.
Oh, I believe it is.
Mm-hmm.
I believe it is, yeah.
Okay.
Right, and you would probably, if you wanted to take the route that Eric suggested, which might not be a bad one, once, if, once you see this and see how it might impact your plan to ask the Town Board, you know, whether the, they still wanted to maintain the easement, you would definitely want it on the.
It has to be properly depicted in order to.
So we can understand.
To address any kind of alteration to the, to the easement language, which the Town Board has to do. We can't do that.
But doesn't it require a public referendum?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't.
Yeah, it's pretty tough.
I don't know if you.
I don't know that that really happens.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it may not, but I mean, I'm not, in either event, we still have to see it depicted on the survey, so.
No, we'll make the changes to this plan. We'll get this.
Right, and, and I think you should consider the alternatives that are available to you to bring your, the property into compliance with the requirements of the easement. You know, public referendum, Town Board, or, you know, moving the tables, because that.
Oh, I don't think that the tables are a problem. We can move the tables.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't, you know, I don't have a personal opinion about what, what the solution should be. I'm just saying you should prepare your client for the options and, and having it depicted would be helpful.
Parkin lot might encroach on the easement.
The curving, I think, might encroach on it, which I'm concerned about, you know, back when this was built.
Right.
If you look through the file, you'll see nothing was very, you know, we didn't really dot our i's and cross our t's very clearly. And our surveys were hand-drawn, so there's a lot of room for error at that point in time, so.
Yeah, so we'll try to fix it. But, you know, we've got to start somewhere in having it on the plan here, and, you know, getting that, a surveyor to measure it out will help. So we are, I'd like to ask the Board of, does anybody have any other comments?
No, I don't think so.
No? Sharon, you good?
Yeah.
Randy?
You guys are discussing it.
All right, so we'll just.
The only thing I would say, sorry, is the, the wall, I defer to the ARB in terms of the color and all of that. But the guardrail, and I trust Ann Glennon to work it out. I don't want to set it back a little bit where it seems like you could jump over, and then you have the same danger. Because it is a really tall wall, and I do think that there are residences up behind it, kind of, no.
There's a, at that point where it's its tallest, there is a good, good area of, I think, woodland there.
It's wooded, yes.
Just to consider the safety, that's all. I agree so often. Or to Airbnb and Anne, but.
Yeah, there's also a path that comes down now that people use to get to the.
All I mean is if you set the wall back and it looked like the ground went for a while, and then there was a cliff, just my, in a layperson's mind.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I have, I have a comment about that that I'd like to make, but I was waiting.
First have to check with Ann.
Yeah.
And check with the state code to make sure that what we construct is compliant.
Well, I felt this, I have the same concern that Ian had about it. And if there is no way, especially because there's a lot of foot traffic, I think, at night, back and forth to the one-stop, and depending on where the fence is, you might consider landscaping on the east side of the fence above, if it has to be put back from this retaining wall, just to, you know, prevent somebody from, you know, thinking, oh, I'll just fall over the fence and I'll be where I need to be, and then they're, you know, deep down. So that's something to think about. So I just want to go through the questions, if everybody's okay with that. Should the scenic easement be illustrated on the site plan?
Yes. Yes.
Should coverage calculations be added to the site plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Does the Board wish to send comments to the ARB? I think we should, I think we should just say, you know, we, we feel you.
Just decide what you want, what color you want it to be.
Let's get something compatible. Yes, yeah. We're not going to make the choice, but we're going to say, you know, please, we have faith in you, but let's get, build the wall. Okay, so.
I like the tan stain.
Yeah, we can put that in our comments.
The Board has a preference that might help.
We can put that in our comments, Randy.
To hear that.
If, if it looks the way, in the field, if it looks the way.
If it looks like that in the field, yeah, I agree. That's my, that's the one I prefer up there. But, so we can just say that looked.
When we get it painted.
Yeah.
We'll invite you.
Okay.
For the viewing.
All right. And then there's one more question. Is an elevation drawing or another visualization of the proposed wall required? And so I guess that's a yes, right? Everybody's good with that?
That's a, that's a.
Do you want, what kind of elevation do you want of the wall? Because it's very, going to be very.
Well, I think once you consult Ann, then you can revise it. You know, we were going to, we were going to ask Ann for a determination on this anyway, but if you're already working with her, then if you just give us that feedback, I think that would be sufficient.
You know, if we, if we got the engineer to look at this in terms of the slope and the safety and the wall and the elevation or section drawing, because that's really.
Yeah.
I mean, an elevation drawing, I think, is really an aesthetic, a visual thing.
Yeah.
Whereas the, a section of the wall, it might be more useful to us. That we can see how the wall fits into the slope.
Yeah, or it says elevation drawing or another visualization. It doesn't have to be an elevation. It can be another visualization of the proposed wall.
There is a section on the.
Section on the plan that was submitted. So when I say, what, what kind of elevation do you want? Do, you know, because an engineer is just going to draw like lines with a lot of white space.
That's right.
But then we'll see the fence on top of it. But if you wanted something more aesthetic, I'd have to do more of a 3D rendering for you.
What are we getting at here? Safety or aesthetics?
I think both. I think both. I mean, you know, we're, it's a very steep. The retaining wall has to cover a lot of ground. It's a, it's a, it's pretty deep into the land area there. I mean, it's got to be 6 or 8 feet, right? Maybe even higher in some areas, because it kind of, it goes up as you drive back into the property.
Yeah, so.
So.
Here we have, from this point, it has the heights listed, 6'6" here, 6'6", 5'6", 5'6" here.
I guess it just looks higher because of the ground area above it?
I think it's 5.
6 feet? Because it said here 6.
It's like plus 9.
Somewhere where it was at last.
Yeah.
I think it's an 8 over, so its highest point is 8 to the corner.
It says 5 to 8.
Okay, so it is 8. It's 8 to the corner. I thought I was remembering correctly that it was well over my head, yeah.
There is a section on this, on this one?
Yeah, we go to pull this scroll. Here we go.
Okay.
This shows the 8-foot wall and the topography up here. That would be the most extreme case.
How does, how does it drain? Drains down the front of the wall, the back of the wall?
Well, yes, there are leak holes. So this is gravel to allow drainage to move away from the wall, but anything that pools down here would turn over here through a leak hole, not getting built up.
What I was getting at was rather than a cross-section, was just like, like as you face the wall, you know what I mean, like showing.
Yeah, what it would look like, yes.
Very fine drawing.
Because that's pretty much what an engineer would do. It would just be kind of lines.
Yeah, I mean, I.
There would be no detail, like aesthetic detail, but if you want that, it goes to somebody else, not the engineer.
But maybe.
I just need to know feedback-wise.
I wonder if the ARB might want that.
I think it would, I think it would serve your purposes in general to provide something like that, some kind of visualization where we can see what it looks like from the front, and then a cross-section, you know, reiterating, I guess, what you have here, but along with the front, you know.
Yeah, just something that shows what it looks like along its length as you look at it.
Yeah. And then with samples of the stone, and we're leaning towards the tan, then I think, I think that would be, I think that would help. I think it's more information, and that's what we need.
Okay.
And once you speak with Ann, you'll have a better sense of, you know.
What we can do with that, that barrier.
Yes, I think you would, you would, she can, she can advise you on some of that, too.
I'm thinking we just move it back just enough so it's not part of the structure, whatever that dimension is. Doesn't have to be 4 feet high, 42 inches, so.
Yeah.
You know, so when you're down here looking up, maybe back far enough, it won't look so.
You won't, maybe not even see it. I mean, that would be ideal, and that's really where putting some landscaping in front of it. You know, some kind of bushes or something, some low bush.
Even behind it, it'll grow through it.
Say again?
Even behind it, it'll grow through it.
Yes, or with something like that would, would, you know, enhance the visual aspect of it, and it would also serve to hear from people from climbing over it, seems to me. Anyway.
So do we have comment from Tom on this, on the engineering drawing? I was wondering.
No.
Because I just, I mean, I.
I mean, if we did, it was, it's older.
I think we'd want, want him to take a look at the section, see what, you know, that he's comfortable with it.
There might be some, I have my file here, Randy. There may be something in here. This came in, in August, I guess. I have a lot of different memos here, so. It's been going off a while. Let's see, that's Susan.
And when the, the date of the engineer's drawing is, the date is on this thing, or when this one was submitted? Is this, is this old?
I don't know. I don't know if this is the same one.
Tom has not commented on the.
Okay.
Well, I think we should definitely refer to him.
Yeah, I have that in my notes. So we'll get, we'll get Tom to take a look at it, too.
Has it been referred to him, or it will be?
We, we will, yeah. If everybody's in agreement with that.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I, because I have that down as one of the things we'll do. And we'll, we'll coordinate with Ann, and you'll coordinate with Ann, and we'll all hopefully come to some point sharing the information. And I think that's about it.
All right.
Do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, great. All right, great, thank you.
Okay.
Sam. Because when Susan leaves, you'll know.
I think you saw me.
Oh, you did.
I don't think anybody's ever modified an easement with a public referendum in East Hampton.
I'm sure that's true.
It's a pretty high bar.
So she's right, it's really about the parking, yeah. It's really.
State modifications on the ballot.
Hi.
Um, Potts?
We missed you.
Yeah, well, I did some. Continuing. So the last item on the, the work session for site plan review is the East Hampton Pods application. Okay.
Eric, this is yours.
The biggest change is going from four, they're proposing to go from four bio swells to one with conventional drainage. You should talk to the applicants why they're proposing this and require filters on the catch basins. There are no clearing restrictions on the property. However, there were supposed to be areas along the periphery to remain. It's been cleared. Revegetation plans should be submitted. They're proposing a second permanent access point instead of grass pavers over in this corner of the property. of grass pavers over in this corner of the property, and you should discuss why that's being proposed. Also proposed is a temporary 1,000 gallon propane gas tank with bars in the right-of-way. That would need approval with Superintendent of Highways and the airport manager, and we would need to contact them if the applicants don't feel they can relocate that to a, to another spot on their property. We do note that there is a storage area to the rear where that propane tank could go, so...
Where is that? Could you point that out?
What's that?
Where in the rear it should go?
All of this would be lining up Pod units as storage, basically as a prepping area for certain units to, to go in the building. Um, so, I have the approved plan. This is the proposed modification. This bioswale is proposed to remain. However, you can see here that there's rings, rings here and rings there, which would be buried with catch basins along the road. The approved plan included bioswales in those areas, which would be stone that would vegetate naturally. So, this one is remaining, but then there were these other three that were, were proposed. Again, they want to go to conventional drainage in those locations, and you should ask why. It would seem that that actually would be more expensive. It's, um, you know, more permanent structures rather than just stone. And then again, the second access point as asphalt instead of, um, grass pavers and the issue of the propane tank in the right-of-way, which will need various approvals if they're going to move forward with that.
Yeah, that's actually what I was going for. Were you suggesting that the propane tank could be elsewhere in, on the other side?
Yeah, I mean, if you look behind the building, and my understanding is that, um, the natural gas lines are being installed or repaired or enlarged in the industrial road, and that's why this temporary...
Thanks, okay.
Is needed, but there is an outdoor storage area to the rear of the building where, you know, you could just remove some of these, some of those areas and, and put the propane tank there. It's not terribly large, and then that wouldn't increase coverage. They're right up at the 75% maximum allowable coverage, so those areas along the periphery that we mentioned, like for instance here, was to remain the natural, you know, the native woodland. The property, I haven't looked at a survey and as-built or as it is now survey, so I can't say that it's 100% clear, but it is mostly cleared at this point, and those areas were removed vegetation. So, I think you need to really, that's really the main aspect of this modification request, is the change from the bioswales to the, the rings, dry wells, and you should discuss with the applicant why they feel that that's necessary, and I'll put the aerial up here, too, but...
Eric, you, so if they, if they did a re-veg of the buffer areas, there's dry wells in there, right?
Yeah, well, there would be.
There would be.
But the dry wells are in areas where the bioswales would be. The bioswales will vegetate with various, you know, plant species. Obviously, you're not going to have pitch pines or oaks or any kind of, you know, substantial vegetation, which was there before, but it would be partially vegetation. So, again, this isn't going to show much because this is from spring of 2018.
Excuse me.
But this is the subject parcel. These are airplane hangars. This is the landscape details facility. This is Phoenix House at the end of Industrial Road in Wayne Scott.
The runway is, go, go back to that picture a second, that one, see how close, that's, that's, that's the runway to be in there, right?
Yeah.
Eric, what, why do you, you sound as though you prefer the bioswales over the drainage tanks?
Well, when it has plants in it, there's a natural filtration of the stormwater runoff that occurs that you don't get with catch basins. It just catches the runoff and leaches it directly into the ground. The bioswales have plant matter growing in them, so that provide, the root system provides some natural filtration. If you further enhance that with the filters that they make that are on the market now, you're improving the, um, the impacts on groundwater. This is in a special groundwater protection area. It's not actually in water recharge. The boundary of water recharge was drawn right to the door for the property, but it's basically, it's... It's a better way of protecting the groundwater resources in the area, because you're using natural filtration of stormwater runoff as opposed to just collecting it and, and putting it into the ground.
There are no filters in those proposed...
It was discussed during the course of review. It was not required as a condition of approval. I think the applicant stated that they would look into it. They were, they were concerned about, I believe, the maintenance issues related to it, but it, it's not required, but they did say that they would consider it.
And you say it's more expensive, what they're proposing?
Well, the bioswale is essentially just stone. You know, they basically just excavate a little bit, put stone in it, and then let it revegetate. Um, you know, when you have dry wells, you have cast concrete structures that cost money. Um, I don't know the exact figures, and you know what I mean? That, and the applicant can probably speak to that as to why they want the conventional drainage as opposed to the bioswale, but just at face value, it's, you know, you're digging a pit and you're putting rocks in it as opposed to buying, you know, concrete rings, so I would think that it would be less expensive, but...
Any other questions, Barrett, on this? The applicant?
Good evening. My name is Gary Krupnick. I am the builder, developer, and owner of the property, and, um, I'd just like to kind of flashback for a second. Almost all of the items that are being requested today were in the original proposed plans. In other words, we did plan on using rings. We went to bioswales to save money. It was a corporate decision. We looked at it from an engineering standpoint and a professional standpoint, and it's a lousy detail. There's just no two ways about it. It's a very tight site, heavy trucking, uh, in terms of circulation is required there to get around the back of the building. We pushed the building back well off the, um, the, um, street line so that you can't see any of the pods. They're all buried behind the building, between the building and the hangars for that reason, and so that there's nothing unsightly about it, you know, looking at outside storage or anything like that. What the, um, rings do from an economic standpoint, because it's not just the rings, you can't, it's an asphalted site completely. We didn't go for stone or anything like that in terms of the driveways, so it's, it's an expensive site to begin with. Without a curb and without thick structures, subterranean, the rings, when you plow snow with this, first of all, the trucks run off the edge of the, of the asphalt, and they break the asphalt on an ongoing basis, which is not desirable with bioswales. Secondly, the bioswales are a maintenance nightmare. They jam up with leaves and, and everything else, and they honestly, after a short period of time, don't work. It's a non, non-stop maintenance headache. Um, from an economic standpoint, we're investing well over a hundred and some odd thousand dollars to go back to putting in a hard curb so that the blade on the snow plowing operation, a slight tight, tight site, will run the, run the curb, and then it puts the snow behind the curb. There's no other place to store it. So, it will affect, because we're not hardscaping on top of the rings and the drainage structures. From an economic standpoint, we're investing well over a hundred thousand dollars to make these improvements from an engineering standpoint. We did go over this with Tom, town engineer. He was in complete agreement with it. He liked the details. He had no issues with it. Um, they were proposed, as I said originally, where they run some of the preliminary plans. We took it out, you know, from an economic standpoint, because you could do it with bioswales. Um, the, as far as the clearance, the clearing, we've cleared that site 100% in accordance with combination of the site plan and onsite direction by, uh, uh, Jim, the airport and manager.
Manager.
Yeah, because we had the, the site fenced with the deer fence, and then there's a couple of jets that are behind us, and, um, they complained about their wingspans.
You need to...
Yeah, I'm too close to them.
Yeah, yeah.
They complained about their wingspans possibly if they get off the center line on the taxiway, hitting the fence, so we had to go back on the Jim's direction and remove all the fence, take down some of the foliage that was inside our fence line, and push the fence back into the property, put the fence back up again. So, we've gone out of our way to accommodate all of the different, you know, aspects that are involved in here. I appreciate what, um, the couple of pilots said. I'm a pilot myself. I've been flying since I'm 13 years old out of East Hampton Airport, so had no issue with it. We spent money to take care of it in spite of the fact that we could have pushed back. So, um, this, these are...
Could have built a smaller building.
Excuse me?
You could have built a smaller building, too.
Uh, this is 100% inside your land use regulations.
Well, not now.
Well, I don't know what changed, you know, but yeah, so that's, that's what it is. And, uh, and the town was heavily compensated for the scale of the building, and the health department went along with it in excess of 200 and some odd thousand dollars. So, we've done everything to, um, bring a product to the market that we're proud of. I haven't had anybody complain about it now that it's in place and they've looked at it, and from a maintenance standpoint on a tight site, you, you have to be very conscious of it. Otherwise, it'd be busting up all of the asphalt all over the place right away. So, as to the second egress, because that was mentioned as well, that egress was always there. We had a choice to circulate. We chose not to circulate. Fire people came back and said that we had to give them a crash gate if we weren't going to circulate. When we looked at it again with the traffic coming up and down that road now, it's, um, it's a much safer situation to come straight out than to go into the two-way traffic inside the site, because the front of the site has all of the cars parked there, and it would be, um, two-way traffic. So, we just chose to spend the extra couple of bucks and asphalt that second driveway so that when you come around the back of the building, they, they fed, they feed right out onto Industrial Road. These are, for the most part, they're 40-foot trucks. There are some tractor trailers, and with all that traffic back and forth on that road now with landscapers and the rest of it, I'd rather be safe than sorry. The radiuses are 60-foot radiuses. Those are ICC regulation radiuses for 80-foot trailers, and that's the safest way to do it without oncoming tra, with oncoming traffic. You're not bubbling out into the oncoming lanes.
What about the propane tank?
Okay. Uh, I guess you guys are up on what's happening with natural gas on Long Island. There's, not only is there a four-inch high-pressure line that sits in the street on the south side of Industrial Road, they just put in a, in a, in a high-pressure, um, compressor line that's, I think, 30-inch diameter that just went in. That's why the street's all torn up again, um, and that's right at the foot of our driveway. And then the governor got into an argument about whether or not he's going to allow them to bring a line across the New York Harbor to feed Long Island's needs, and PSE and G said, well, if you're not going to, we don't have the capacity, we're shutting down any new gas. So, our application waits in abeyance.
Application for service?
Yeah, you know, along with, I think it's well over 4,000 applications now for natural gas. There's no question we're going to get it. Um, I'm happy to put the tank anywhere that it works, but we're required to, there's only, there's one Cambridge unit, which is a high-efficiency, 98% efficient, very expensive gas unit that heats that entire building, well, 35,000 feet of it or 45,000 feet of it, and the manifold for PSE and G comes out of the front of the building. So, we'd have to be right opposite that with the tank to pick that line up. That's a high-pressure line. It's a three-inch line, so that's, that's the reason why.
Can't connect to that?
Excuse me?
You can't connect to that going...
Fire marshal wants it 20 feet away to the building, 20 feet away from any structure or in the ground.
Because you can understand why. There might be some apprehension about putting a propane tank on the right-of-way of even a lightly-traveled road like Industrial.
There is, we've put it behind Jersey barriers, which are con, big concrete barriers, so that there's no issue with it, and there's no less than four or five propane tanks in the same position, on the same road, in existence for quite a few years now. It's actually in the trees that the thing is going, and rather than tear the place up, knock down more trees to put a tank in the ground for what we hope is six months and certainly less than a year, because they are coming to a resolution on this moratorium right now, there's no other way to feed gas to the building. I mean, I...
You need it now?
Yeah, I...
I mean, I mean, you're, in terms of your operation.
It's colder in the building than it is outside the building right now. I was in it this afternoon. The building is so well insulated with the new codes and everything that it's literally like an icebox if, if you, and you can't, there's people's furniture and stuff in the pods. That's what happens. So, it must be climatized at 55 to 60 degrees. It's contractual to the customers. That's what they're buying, and otherwise the stuff opens up. It all, you know what happens to the wood and the joints and everything. So, there's, these are, I think, good business reasons and good common sense reasons from every aspect. We were instructed going through this that, as far as the airport is concerned, Jim Brundage had final say on any of these kind of details, where the fence goes, where it doesn't go, take down a tree, don't take down a tree, and his, he and his guys are in there all the time. And, you know, we've tried to accommodate everybody. Everybody seems to be happy with it. We're also concerned about the aircraft safety issues with that taxiway. The taxiway was never designed to carry jets. It's, today it's carrying jets. You know, I built that, you know. It's, it's a driveway. It's not a taxiway in terms of weight bearing. You, you put a 16,000-pound jet on it, it's, it's still a driveway. You know, you're off the center line, and there's snow and ice there, and you're off the center line by a foot. You shouldn't have to worry about hitting a deer fence with a wing. You know, there's, we've had enough airplanes that have knocked out deers already on the runway, let alone on taxiways, so...
But they have all that new deer fencing now, so...
Which is working extremely well. The problem is that the deer are already living there.
Oh, yeah, no, right.
You know, that's the problem. It's not, it's not about, you know. The runway had to be cleared for, for Starbucks's jet, you know, on the, on the north side. They took down a whole bunch of trees to get his, get his machine in there, because he, they were, his pilots were starting to refuse to come in because of the, you know, there wasn't enough clearance for the length of that wing.
Different kind of problems.
So, it's not, you know, there's, there are a lot of, there are a lot of other factors that are involved in this kind of thing, especially when you're building non-NON airside at an airport. There's a lot of safety factors involved. We think this is the safest, safest way. It's my intent to go beyond the, um, the requirements for greening some of the site. Once, once we're in, what I intend to do is to, to put some spruce or some evergreens on my side of the fence where I can put it in, but I've got to get everything located now with the, the rings and the rest of it, and then it's all subterranean. They're all, you know, they're, they're open-top. They meet all of the, um, health department and land use regulations, and it really is the right way to do it. I built the hangars with the swales. At that time, we didn't have, you know, nobody was interested in bioswales, and we've had some issues with that. We've had to go back and deal with it. There are swales on the hangar side. There's 93,000 feet of hangar there, and that's the way that drainage runs. Runs gravity into a swale. It's a messy detail. You know, it's, it's a nightmare with trying to maintain an edge on the asphalt, because the asphalt breaks up and goes into the ground. It's what you're trying to prevent. That's why you put a curb there.
Would you be willing to put filters in the dry well?
Um, the answer is we have put filters into all the curb inlets that lead to the dry wells.
That they have to be clean.
Eric may not be aware of that, but we are, we are, we are putting filters into the inlets that are connected to the pipe that go into the subterranean dry wells.
But then the filters have to be cleaned on some...
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Which means they need change, yes.
You lift the cast, you lift, you lift the pre-cast out, you clean the filter. It's once or twice a year of that, and you put it back in. It's not, you know right away when that, when that's not working. You don't with bioswales until it overruns everything.
What, do you have monitors or something in, in the filter?
No, no, you'd see it right away, because the curb inlet isn't taking the water. It's like when your drain gets clogged up with leaves, that, you'd see it right away.
That's one of my concerns about filters, is I know why we want to encourage it. I think it's a great idea. If the filters get clogged, the drain stops working instead of bypassing the filter.
Right.
Because the drainage itself, obviously, we have requirements for a reason. I would hate to...
We are, we are putting, we are putting bio, filters in to the curb inlets, so that's, that's before the pipe, before the rings, and that's, you know, and that's, you see it right away. Either, either, either the inlet is taking water or it's not. The bioswale, you don't. You just see a whole bunch of water laying on top of the leaves. It isn't moving.
And what about the grass paper? Excuse me if I, if I didn't, you might have answered...
What was that for?
Well, you're, you're replacing it with the, uh, the... Well, you're, you're replacing it with the, the asphalt.
Fire department requires load bearing for, I'm not sure what the code here is, but generally it's up in the eighty-thousand-pound range. You're not doing that any other way.
Did the fire marshal request that?
You, they have to be able to get their equipment and not sink in the mud.
I understand, I'm just asking, how, how did you come to that conclusion? Did the fire marshal request that or was that?
It's pretty standard practice. I mean, we can, we can check the code on it, but that's, that's the whole point.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
The fire, fire department doesn't want to, get cornered in a, in a, in a place where they can't circulate and can't get around.
I understand the concept, I'm just wondering what led you to, to decide to do that? Did the fire marshal request it?
Fire marshal requested the secondary cut.
That's all I wanted to know. And did he recommend the pavement?
The question was the pavers, and that, that's the answer to the pavers.
He requested the pavers as well? He requested you remove the pavers?
He wanted the dry well serviced with load bearers equipment.
We have had fire, fire department approve grass pavers for emergency access and other applications, so I don't know if it's different.
Well, maybe we can, we can ask.
It might have something to do with the, the weight of the trucks that are continuously going to be going over that location?
The trucks that pods use are a lot lighter than the fire equipment.
Yeah, no, I understand, but it's, but it's continuous traffic, though, that, I'm just thinking that, you know, if you have forty-foot trucks that are coming and going on that spot, that might explain.
This says that the.
Fire marshal reviewed it, that second access point was left open so that the, because the truck, the fire truck.
Needs to turn.
Needs to turn around, right.
You have to leave pavers for the crash gate. That way you had, you know, grass pavers, you didn't have more hardened.
Right, hard surface.
It was the, off, the fire marshal, the fire, office of fire prevention that asked for the pavers.
Mm-hmm. Not, not just to leave it naturally.
Well, no, no, they asked for a second access point.
Well, it says.
Plan approved with grass pavers as for an emergency second access point for the trucks.
Right.
Well, the real, the real. You posed now the question.
This memo says the approved site plan included an emergency second ass, access point consisting of grass pavers as requested by the office of fire prevention.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct, that's correct.
So the grass pavers were.
Well, perhaps I worded it oddly.
Okay.
They asked for a second access point because their turning radius was not adequate for a higher.
Preposition phrases in the room.
But it's supposed to have a crash gate and not be used by the vehicles for the pod's operation and be grass paved, that was what was proposed.
But the real change is, is this is no longer just an emergency access, you're going to use this part of your circulation.
To, to eliminate the onco, the two-way traffic.
No, I, I, I understand, I just mean, I think that's the substantive change.
And I'm saying that to my mind is why you don't want to.
If you have grass pavers at the crash gate, you never use unless the building's on fire, it's different than driving in every day.
Well, does that increase the coverage then, if it's paved?
The pavement counts coverage.
Okay.
One way or the other.
I mean, because they're at the max, right? At seventy-five percent?
Yeah, basically.
So.
It's, it's a one-for-one, it's a better engineering detail and it satisfies, the fire marshal, it satisfies. Our needs and safety concerns are really pretty primary about it.
Randy, does anyone have any, any direct questions? I, I would, just before you go, I'd like to hear from planning response to the comments about the swales, because they seem to contradict, it seems as both of you saying different things. So I just, and I don't want to get into a debating society here. We're thinking about engineering issues that, you know.
I think that we said opposite things. I think Mr. Crumpley was saying that the maintenance of the bio swales is, is difficult and that, and also I think he pointed out that if you don't have, because you can't have the asphalt and then a curb and then a bio swell.
Sorry. What he was saying was you would need, you, you'd have to have the asphalt run off to the bio swell, you couldn't have a curb in between and a snow plow, if I'm correct.
You tear it right up.
Would, would tear up the edge of the asphalt.
Because there's no curb.
And then he was saying also it gets jammed up with leaves and things like that and it requires more maintenance. From our standpoint is the, whatever vegetation and things of that sort that would grow in, in there will help somewhat, you know, to, to better filter contaminants that are in the stormwater runoff. So I don't know that we said opposite things.
Well, not, but, but you're coming at it different ways. In part, I think one of the concerns is that it's groundwater recharge area. Even though it is the airport, it is groundwater recharge.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, Suffolk designated pine barrens and Suffolk, South Fork Special Groundwater Protection Area.
Right, groundwater protection, thank you, long work.
I think they were missing something. When, when the rings go in the ground.
Please go to the microphone.
Yeah, yeah.
What's, when the rings go in the ground, we're not hardscaping the top of that. Any water that, that, that falls or that runs off into that area still will perk right back into the ground. There'll still be grass there, there'll still be, you're just not going to have a bio swell that's, that becomes, just becomes like a swamp. You know, it's, it's still open top, it's not being asphalted over and, and to prevent the water from going into the ground and run off onto adjacent piece of property or something like that. It's like, it's just like your lawn, you're just going to have some steel open tops or actually closed tops because you're piping everything direct. It's a much, it's, it's, it's a lot more money and it's a much better solution.
I'm just trying to understand.
All right, I just wanted, I just wanted to get that, because that seems to be the primary issue here. But our conversation could be focused.
Ground, the groundwater is still going in the ground at the same place.
Okay.
It's not, you're not losing anything.
But despite.
It's being filtered differently.
Despite the comparison between the bio swell and these catch basins, you're still saying, and Eric agrees, I think, that if you put in the bio swell, that's going to cause a problem with snow plowing and the asphalt. So it doesn't matter even if the bio swales was a better solution for filtering the water.
You still have other problems.
You still have a problem with the, the snow plowing and breaking up of the asphalt.
No question about it. It's, it's a country edge spec when you don't put a hard curb on it and you're going to knock the heck out of it every time you run a blade or every time somebody drops a wheel off the edge.
So why, why didn't you know that when you did?
One of the plans did, one of the plans did earlier carry that, but it's, it's our option because either one of them is acceptable, it's not codified that you must use, you know, rings.
No, I know, it just seems like you're, you're coming back, I, most of this work's already done, right? You've already, you've already paved the, the second access.
Building is less than thirty days away from being CO'd approximately.
Right. So you've already paved the second access.
Nothing's been paved.
Oh, okay.
No, no, it's not.
It's not paved.
It's not been paved, it is cleared because it had to be cleared, it mattered what, you know, it's not paved.
But it's not paved yet.
No.
I went by there today.
I'm trying to understand.
Let, let Randy take.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the difference between what you submitted in terms of the vegetation that was going to remain up there and, and what we're talking about now. First of all, it's all been cut down, so.
It would have been cut, it, it was cut, it was cut to spec to begin with. It's not that, it's a matter of what the final finish is.
Is that right?
Whether or not you've got a depression and the water runs directly off the edge of the asphalt into the wa, into that depression, which we're calling a bio swell.
No, 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 I'm talking about, I thought we had agreed that you were going to leave a certain amount of vegetation up around the perimeter of the site when we approved it.
It, it's, it stands today exactly the way it was approved with the exception of the adjustments that were made at the direction of Jim Brundage, the life safety issues, what I had said earlier. He, the fence was moved closer to the building at the direction of the airport manager, the life safety issues because of the jets using that taxiway.
But that was the only place we had vegetation staying up?
That was, if you look at.
I think we had it along the road, too.
Yeah. So there really weren't large tracts of, of areas that were going to remain as the natural vegetation. And I couldn't tell you for sure what was cleared without having some kind of, you know, survey showing how it is right now, but it did look to me like even those limited small areas that were going to remain were cleared when I went to the site. On the plan.
So we need a new survey that shows existing conditions.
Yeah, I know, and I have it somewhere here, I just got to find it. I got it, I just got to find it.
You know.
So basically, it was, it was an area of basically around the periphery of the site here that would go around the bio swales and that was supposed to remain over on the side. Most of it would have been over on the side and then along the, the northern fence line.
Why not in front, though?
Well, that's, that's still there.
Who will this include?
In the front?
Yes, the, the stuff in the front is not.
But you, you, you have to clear that to put in, you've already cleared it and that's where the, the dry wells are going to go.
Yeah.
Dry well is going in the clearing that were, that are permitted.
Well, isn't that, you showed uncleared.
This is a great plan, you have to read both together.
But I mean, you showed that as uncleared in the original approval, right? That you were going to leave that up.
Right, and have to see it in conjunction with the other part, with the drainage.
Well, isn't that what we're saying, Eric? That that's, that's the old plan?
This, this was called for as a bio swell.
Yeah, actually, that, that exact plan right there is the approved one because it doesn't account for the bio swell. But generally, there was going to be a strip of vegetation to remain about twenty feet in width along this property line.
Right, that was our, that was our understanding, yes.
And to me, just eyeballing it, it looked like it was cleared to, to the existing fence line. But again, I couldn't tell you for sure unless a survey verified.
Well, if they, and if they had to remove the fence, then it's, there's some clearing more to.
We had, we had to move the fence in.
Yeah, I understand.
It's, it's, I just, this is a legal question, but does, does the airport manager have the authority to override a site plan approval?
I don't think so, no.
I don't know if he was overriding.
Well, you changed it, you modified it.
Well, he would be if he asked you to move a structure that we, we, we approved in a certain place. And if he, I mean, I understand that he might have recommended, there might be a good reason for it and we may have agreed to it, but it didn't come before us.
He doesn't have that authority.
He doesn't have the authority to do that.
So.
It's kind of like a chicken and the egg, you know, you put a fence up where.
Yes and no. We, we might have had a chance to give you some input on what we thought would have been a better way to do it, which now is, it's, you know, the horse is out of the barn.
Not trying to usurp any authority here. I'm willing to, and I don't know if you guys quoted earlier, I'm willing to go back afterwards with Eric and plant trees in there now where I can on my side of the fence.
I understand.
Because it's not a money issue. If I have to put a dozen trees in there, you know, I'm happy to do it. It's not, you know, it's not an issue.
Where did you move the fence in now? Can you approximately show?
What happens is, there's a taxiway here on the other side of the, this is just a ditch drainage, that's all it is. And, and the taxiway's here, the old center line's here. So when you put a citation in with a fifty-two-foot wingspan, you know, fifty percent of that goes in each direction. The direction to the south could have easily, with any snow, any ice or anything, could have, could have taken down this fence.
So the fence was on the property line?
It was as directed, right.
Right, no, we're, I'm just, I think we're trying to establish where the fence was and where it is now because we don't have that depicted.
It's, it's, it's been modified, it's been, it was modified for safety reasons and the fence came into the property.
We understand the reasons, right. So where, how far in was it moved?
Much as three or four feet.
Okay.
And do that, some of the, and, and, so that, some of those trees had to come down. I mean, it was, you can't move the fence.
I understand, but that's all, that's all we really wanted to know. How, how much did you move, how far did you have to move it and what did you have to do to move it? We understand why, but we want to know where it was moved and what was removed in order to move it.
So you removed three or four feet of vegetation when you moved the fence?
From inside the property to be able to make that adjustment.
Right, across the, the width of it.
And now you said you could. Actually, what happened was from about here, this fence line was brought into the property. And what I'm suggesting is we'll go back with Eric afterwards and, and, and plant it.
Which is great, but we're trying to assess how much of the vegetated area was, you know, eliminated as, because of this need, which we recognize. We're just trying to get a, there was X number of V. We need to do X minus what?
No, we need a new survey.
Yeah, I understand.
That shows the, you know, what's cleared, where the fence.
Want a tree survey?
Well, we want to know where the fence is and we want to know, I think we want a revegetation plan as was recommended.
And I'm, and I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
I'm happy to do that.
I don't really have a problem with you switching to the, the drainage. I do, I do think Eric's comment is correct that the, the water ends up getting more purified if it's in a bio swell than if it goes through a filtration system. But I, I, I don't have a problem with that. The thing I have a problem with is that the, the, this site was already maxed out to the, to the limit and in part because of the deal the town struck with you.
That's correct.
And the amount that you agreed to pay based on that deal.
Use less acreage, make it work. And that's what we did.
So, so now we're kind of after the fact. So I, I, that's where I'm at. I, I'd like to see a survey that shows us where the new fence is, what's, what's cleared, what's not cleared. And then a veget, a revegetation plan. And I, I don't think we have to, we have to straighten out, we would, we really should have a written recommendation from the airport manager telling us. I mean, I don't know what that taxiway, is that a private taxiway for that guy? I mean, are we accommodating a private?
It was put in a pri, it was put in a private basin, that's now a condominium.
It's condos.
It's not, it's not a town.
It's not, it's not the, like, the runway.
Right.
Okay, so it's a taxiway that accommodates those con, those condominium, those, yeah, those hangers.
Yeah, all those hangers, not just one guy.
So.
Ninety-three thousand square feet of hangar.
Yeah, no, we know, it's a really big building.
Two buildings.
Yeah.
I don't think we looked at that either. I mean, I don't know who did the condo layout.
Not us.
And, and decided that that was adequate space.
Early to mid-nineties I built it.
I'd say it's a while ago.
So, did you know about jets then?
Not for that. Wasn't, wasn't planned to be, you know.
Yeah.
You don't, you can't restrict what goes in the hangar.
The story of that airport, not what was planned to be. The story of that airport, not what was planned to be.
Why is a hangar, puts in a hangar, what he puts in a hangar?
But you'd think you'd build to, to accommodate whatever aircraft might go in there.
Right, no, it's, it's governed by the size of the box, the larger boxes are like fifty by sixty, that's three thousand square feet. But then you get into the wingspan, so that, that's really the problem, it's not, you know.
But we're not, we're, I mean, we're not looking at that side.
No, we're, we're, we're kinda, we're kinda backed in.
But it's part of the reason the fence is moving, I mean, it's not, yeah.
We're getting backed into, uh.
Yeah.
Anyway, so that's, that's where I'm at, I'm okay with the, I, I would like to have a written recommendation from the airport manager telling us why that fence had to be moved and why that vegetation had to be cleared.
I think he's gonna remember what I just said.
And once you have that, what does that?
Well, that, it sets up a, a protocol that the airport manager doesn't just redo a site plan in the field with that, and then come to us to bless it.
Okay, so before we go down a road here that starts on something else, I, we were told when we went into this by the prior supervisor that when it came to the airport and the fence and all of this stuff, that, that he was the final say because it's a life safety issue.
Yeah, well, he was wrong.
Okay, that's just, that's where it comes.
Well, he, but he, he is before us now, we, we have, we can approve this plan or?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, as a matter of, I, I think our council is telling us that the airport manager does not have the authority.
I wanna make sure, is that what you're saying, Jameson?
I don't think that's life safety.
I mean, that's, that, that makes perfect sense to me, what, what you're saying, Randy.
I, I, I deal a lot with Jim because I do the airport.
Right.
Um, for the town, I would be surprised if he, um, vocalized it in that way. I don't think he would have said, I'm the final authority and I'm overriding this, the site plan.
He made the suggestion that he didn't come back to us. Probably Jim made the suggestion.
I recall that there was more to this fence story. Because wasn't there an aspect of it, there was already an existing fence when you signed the lease and part of it was you needed to move the fence.
There was a fence on that line.
Not on that line, was there a fence on the property that part of the lease, in, in signing the lease, you were obligated to move the fence?
Yeah, and add fence.
And add fencing, so there was a, I think at the time that the lease was entered, you see there was a fence in the front, the perimeter fence.
That's correct.
So part of the obligation and where Jim's.
Input.
Direction and input comes in is to remind the new, you know, land lease tenants that they need to, it's, it's up to them now to maintain the, the perimeter fence in a different location now that they're getting access off of the road. At that point, I don't, I wasn't there, I don't know if Jim stood there and said, here's the line, I mean, you have approved plans, surveyors and your, and your fence installation team. I don't know if there was, if it was a mistake or at that point, if it, if they did follow the approved site plan and then realized from the air nautical use on the north side that it wasn't gonna work. Somebody, after going through such a long site plan process, I would think would be tipped off to come back and to tell this board that, but I think that that's where the disconnect maybe occurred. I do remember then the follow-up that there were issues with the turnaround. At that point, I believe that it was told to me that it was put in the wrong place. I don't know if that meant they didn't follow the site plan or perhaps the site plan dictated that it was in the wrong place in terms of.
Right, I get it.
Understanding the property.
Right, well, well, as a, as a general matter, it seems to me that with these properties here, we should work harder to have better coordination with the airport manager. So that if issues like this arise, we're not learning about it after the fact.
I'm sure we sent the site plan to him.
We did, but if we didn't get input from him, you know, would we, we don't, we didn't have a protocol to.
We asked him for comment.
I think, I think, I, I think, and on paper, honestly, it looks like it works. When you, when you bring a jet, when you bring a jet in after sunset and there's a, there's a blind area because there's very little light back there and it gets to where it's that tight.
Yeah.
Comes.
Again, again, that's not the point, it's really not the point, the need to move the fence is valid, it would seem to me. We just need it documented, we needed it to be coordinated with us rather than us finding out now that the fence that we approved or what, what we thought was happening has not happened and we've had no input on that, so that's.
For what it's worth, for what it's worth, him moving the fence off the property line is probably a detriment to your property. I don't think he's doing something that benefits the project, so whether the airport manager said you have to do this or however, I don't know. We ultimately have final say here and it sounds like you're willing to revegetate maybe in equal amounts, so.
Inside the property.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely, if you revegetate it closer to the planes, that wouldn't help anything.
You know, so.
So all I'm saying is, it seems like we could, we could look at the areas we, we've lost, for whatever reason, look at where the new fence line is and if you're willing to revegetate, we could probably come up with hands on work.
Absolutely willing to revegetate and before we make a big deal out of it, I'll leave it at Eric's discretion.
I mean, is there, is there any, because is there any objection to that, again, I don't think that he's cleared.
Yes, I, I haven't had my chance to talk about this application and I'm waiting patiently.
I want, I want, I want Randy to wrap up what he's got because it is his, uh, his, it's his project.
I think I've, I've pretty much said it, we get it, we get a new survey that shows the existing conditions in terms of clearing and fencing in particular, I guess you're gonna be doing a CO survey soon enough, so.
Pretty much done.
The problem is, is that you can't get your CO till you get a modification. So, we really need to see, I think we need to resolve this whole revegetation, new fence issue. Do we have a, a new application with a survey that shows the proposed paving and?
Would you have the, the site plan?
Okay.
But Randy, what?
They can't, they gotta get a modification before they get a CO.
No, of course, but why would we need a new survey now because they're gonna have to do an as-built survey?
Well, how do we know?
But we know the original approved plan.
How do we know where the clearing? How do we know, how do we know where the fence is and where the clearing?
Well, the fence is gonna be in the site plan, right, I'm assuming the fence is in?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know that you need to resurvey the entire project.
That's, well, you're gonna do a re-survey.
The site plan should be amended.
We, we have the original site plan of what was approved, so we know where those trees were, we have a current site plan, there's gonna have to be a survey after the facts, if we look at the current site plan, put revegetation in where we think it should be, he comes back with a survey that shows that he did that, I think that we achieved the goal.
That's okay.
I think, I would be happy to let him comb the shots, I'll put it in, he can go back and inspect it. If it's satisfactory, I'll do a finalized bill and that'll be the end of it, rather than just going circles on people.
Okay, no, that, that makes sense, actually, we don't need to see, we're, we're assuming that the site is a hundred percent clear. So, we wanna see the revege.
Yeah, we'll work on formulating a revegetation plan that basically revegetates as much as possible.
And using the, the vegetation you recommend?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my question.
May I also just ask of Eric regarding the modifications? It's more particular to this propane conversation, in addition to looping Jim Brundage, the airport manager, in on this, we do have two town board members that are liaisons to the airport. They get inundated with questions and comments, concerns, complaints about the airport, I think that they would appreciate being looped in, understanding the changes and especially if this, if the tank goes to the way of the right of way, they need to be informed, I would ask.
And Steve Lynch too, Superintendent of Highways has to know too.
It's Sylvia and Jeff.
There's several areas of coordination.
See, I don't think, I don't know that we are able to give permission to put a tank in a, in a right of way. We can't, we can't do that.
No, that's the town, that's the highway department.
Why don't I put it behind?
And the town board.
There still is a bio swale on the south line of the S wall, in other words, we gotta go back to the.
All along the front.
Yeah, there still is a bio swale, one of the, one of the things that I'm gonna do now is put a curb in front of that to protect the bio swale and protect the edge of that S wall, so we're leaving openings and filters and stuff to, to service it.
Where are you now?
I could take the tank.
That one is.
Yeah, this is all bio swale and this is all bio swale.
Sorry, I thought he was in trouble.
It's not, it's, we just did the practical, really, took these two bio swales, took the gallonage, um, call for, it's not on this one. Let's say this was twelve hundred and fifty and did twelve fifty or more in rings, went to the town engineer, had him approve it, said, yeah, it makes sense, he ran all the numbers and everybody was involved and that's just a one for one substitute in terms of the perk. And we still have the surface area that's gonna filter through the, whatever grass or whatever we put on that.
Where, well, where else could you put the tank?
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
This is unsure, but what we're, what we were saying is we're gonna, in line with where the, the header is, which is about here, because we're coming right out here, the gas company, P C and G is gonna missile in later when they're done with this moratorium, they're gonna missile right in to the building, the head is already set up for them, so we just went in line with that, pick up the same line and the easy thing to do is not take down a bunch of trees and, and set the, the tank here and put, you know, a bunch of concrete bi, uh, barriers around it to protect it, it's a temporary situation.
Well, let's.
If you want, I'll take it and pull it behind, you know, closer to the curb, behind the bio swale.
I think it's better for you because otherwise we're getting into.
It's a temporary structure, I'm happy to do it, you know.
Where, where would you be putting it?
Um, in other words, the, 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 right now, this is asphalt, this is the parking, this is the building, the asphalt, the gas, the gas line is about here, the header for the gas company is here for a future for permanent and that's what we're supposed to tie into now to service the entire building, everything is fed off the front of this.
I understand, but I'm just saying where.
I would go behind the bio swale on a parallel, as close as I can on a parallel basis.
Well, you're still in the right of way.
Uh.
That dashed line is the right of way.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, we can approve.
It's shown here now, and we put it here.
I think what maybe the board could do is formulate a suggestion or if you prefer one concept over the other and give that to the liaisons or the town board.
Jameson, you got it, you got it. There are other propane tanks in the right of way?
Well, he said they were.
I don't know.
They don't have the authority to approve something in a right of way.
Yeah, it's.
From a practical standpoint, you got trucks, propane tanks, that, the whole area is, you know.
We can't do it, we can't do it. Sharon, let, let me, Randy, you wrapped up?
Yeah, yeah, so the propane tank, I think.
I don't have much to add to what Randy's saying.
I think it's gonna be, it's gonna take you a long time to get permission from all these different people and if you can put it on site, uh, wherever, if you wanna do it as part of the revege plan, figure out where. How big is it? It's fu.
Two, five hundred or a thousand, it's a, hopefully it's a six month situation.
Five hundred isn't big, that's.
Five hundred or a thousand, it's little submarine is what it is.
Can you put it on wheels?
I mean, one suggestion would be to, to put it in here, back in here because those are rings now instead of that, that's the bio swale. So I can put it here and put concrete barriers around it, this is where the IA system is, so I can't get near that and I'll just have to run a sleeve out to here and abandon it later, which is fine.
It's okay with me if we, we, it's sort of like a phase.
Yeah, I'm happy to accommodate, it's not, you know, we, we look for the least face of way to deal with it and not, you know, but happy to accommodate, just, and with the trees and.
I would work with Eric on, on that.
Okay.
It's, I think it's easier for you to put it on site.
Over here in front of me and I'll run a sleeve to it before we ask for it and then we'll abandon it, that's all. But ultimately, you can come in. Or did I move to Sharon?
No, I don't have anything to add, I think what Randy's asking for is.
Happy to do it, you know.
Let, let's just hear, I don't know if Sharon's comments were heard, so.
Did you want?
You mean the camera? I just know that everybody else was talking.
Yes, no, yeah, thank you, you're right. Did you wanna add anything to?
No, I do not. But Randy's asking for is everything that we need, yeah.
Kathy.
Well, I, I have a different set of concerns, I guess, at one of, this is in a Suffolk County designated Pine Barrens area, special groundwater protection area and one of the things, at least from my point of view when we approved the original site plan, because of the size of the building and the, that, the permitted coverage was to make sure that we had as adequate groundwater protection as possible and these bio swales were a big piece of what made me comfortable with the project. And the elimination of those is a real concern for me, apart from which I, I too would like to know exactly how much land was, you know, additionally, ex, you know, cleared to accommodate moving the fence and I understand why the fence needed to be moved, but I just wanna know what the ultimate impact is on the footprint of the site because that would impact my sense of whether I could let these bio swales go. I understand that they're difficult to maintain, but part of the reason that we're in such a big, are we having so much trouble with our groundwater is because these things are hard to maintain, they have to be maintained. We have to do stuff like this to keep our groundwater from being polluted. And, uh, you know, we went back and forth on this quite a bit and, you know, we did an environmental assessment that to my mind was influenced by these structures, you know, was very much influenced by the, these mitigations for the groundwater. And I feel a strong sense of responsibility for that, so I understand what you're saying, you know, I have drainage issues on my own property, so I get it. You know, if the leaves bundle at the top of my road, it sends water down, it's not even on my property, so I get it. So, but, but they just, it seems to me that one of the transitions that we all have to make if we're going to have clean groundwater is to maintain these kinds of things, that that's just part of the responsibility of owning a, a business and having a, a building and conducting affairs in an environmentally responsible way. And it's up to each of us to do that, you know, SECR requires that of us, if I may indulge, to say every citizen has a responsibility to contribute to the preservation and enhancement of the quality of life, of the quality of the environment. Enhancement of human and community resources depends on quality physical environment. All agencies must conduct their affairs with an awareness that they are stewards of the air, water, land and living resources and that they have an obligation to protect the environment, so I take that responsibility very seriously in this role. Now, that is why I was like, alright, it's a big building, a lot of clearing, the bio swales mitigated that profoundly for me. So eliminating those is making me really uncomfortable and making me feel like I'm, I'm derelict in my duty as, as a, an agent of the community trying to protect this really important resource. So, I would like a better sense of exactly what we're talking about here in terms of square footage, you know, how much coverage. I understand that, please tell me if I'm incorrect in my understanding that in, in putting the conventional drains in where the bio swales are will not, you won't be covering that with pavement and then having, uh, vehicles and so whatnot on it.
It will not, it will not be impervious, it'll still be open to whatever, you know.
Right.
The lids will be impervious.
To put on that.
The lids will be impervious, but you will, would you put, would you use it as outdoor storage? Would you park vehicles over it, I mean, that's the.
Not, it's, 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 if, if we're not basically hardscaping it in some form, we're not parking vehicles on it, that's, that's, that was.
Okay, so for the, for the benefit of the public, when you say hardscape, what do you mean exactly? Because not everybody understands that term.
Asphalt, drive-on pavers, RCA, you know, anything that's in, allows the water to pass, we're not doing that.
So if you're not paving it, when you say hardscape, that equals paving?
We're not doing that.
Okay.
The revege plan is gonna show what they're gonna do with those areas. That would be one way for you to see.
Mm-hmm.
What's gonna go on.
Yeah, well, I'm still not comfortable abandoning the bio swales, I'm sorry, it just doesn't, I know it's an engineering thing, I know it's a thing, I know it's a project, but we're at that point in the development of this community that those things need to be done and each little piece makes a contribution to the, to the groundwater and this is, this is highly sensitive groundwater area. So, I guess what I want is then a survey and I would like to see this revegetation plan and what you're proposing and how that would filter the water. What, what kind of revegetation plan are you gonna offer that will be comparable to a bio swale, to the efficacy of a bio swale?
No maintenance, no irrigation, no, no fertilizer, no pesticide, no herbicide, no irrigation.
Fair.
Let me, if I, if I may, how come, the, according to the report, you're going to keep one of the four bio swales? What, what's the reason?
No, there's, there's.
It's not in the way, I think.
This bio swale remains, this bio swale remains and this bio swale remains.
Yeah, it's not in the way of his paving, he's saying when they wanna clear the snow, they've gotta come in.
It's not, this, the site got so squeezed down that it's not.
Our concern was really the, the ongoing operations and, and safety of the whole thing, I mean, there's no, without a curb on this thing, just gonna be breaking this up, these are very, very tight, the whole site is.
So it's not driven by the relative efficiency of.
Certainly not economics.
No, or, or efficiency of bio swale versus any other method, that, that isn't the reason.
Practical standpoint, these little itty bitty bio swales.
It could have been a smaller building.
Yeah. In a site of this, of this tight size, are, are just gonna be, they're not gonna work. I mean, it's just, you're gonna, you're gonna have constant overflow on the site, it's really not. I mean, this, what's there now works and recharges properly into a one hundred percent sand base. This is not hardscrabble subterranean, it's all sand. So it's, you know, it's a much better design, the curbs eliminate, the asphalt breaking up and going into the ground, which is a whole other situation.
But, I mean, you do understand that, you know, it's kinda like a, sort of after the fact that, and the fact, the driven fact was that it was a large building, so, you know, there, there could be some pushback on this side that, well, okay, so now you got the large building and thing, one of the things that allowed the large building to get built is now being eliminated. So, or at least in some folks' mind, that allowed it to be built, is being eliminated, so that, that would explain the pushback, I think.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the size of the building seemed integral to your original business plan, you know, you, you know, that was what we understood from you. So then, you were putting the bio swales in, we were hesitant about the size of the building, we were putting the bio swales in, it was like, okay, we'll at least deal with the stormwater runoff because we're taking completely, you know, vegetated land and stripping it of all the vegetation and that has an impact on the groundwater, there's no question about that. And then, then, so then, I understand that you're dealing with, um, you know.
The practicality.
The practicality of it and issues on the ground, you know, once you actually get in there and do stuff, I understand that the situation changes. I used to be married to a builder, I get that, so, um, it's true, twenty-three years was a nightmare, anyway. I get it and I get the proximity of the airport, I used to, I used to, you know, I'm very well versed about airport issues, so I get that, but I just feel like it feels a little bait and switchy to me, that, I understand, but I'm telling you, that's how it feels to me.
Show you the budget.
And it's, and it's, I understand that, but, but what we could have said to you is that we'll make the building smaller and then you'll have the circulation you need, you can curb it and you can put the bio swales in and, you know, that could have, that, that was an alternative, really, that you weren't willing to explore and we kinda said, oh, alright, you know, because we're trying to work with you.
Corporate picked the location based on.
Excuse me?
Corporate picked the location based on the fact that they could meet their corporate.
I get it, I get it, but we're not responsible to corporate, we're responsible to you.
I appreciate it.
And our, and, and the town board and the code of this community and the SECR policies.
We do recognize that a forty-four thousand square foot building is one of the, what, three or four biggest buildings in the town.
In the town.
I do, heard that a few times.
And that, and with that, well, with that comes concerns about things that might seem to be, you know, minor details, you know, when you're building big, there's no such thing as minor, so, which is, again, where you're hearing the pushback from.
Where, where do, where do we?
Let me get, let me get, let me get a rest of the tape.
Top of the area where the, the, who's gonna go and turn that into a bio swale, so they still get that?
Can we, can we, um, excuse me, excuse me? Can we direct?
I'm sorry.
Direct the comments this way if you don't mind.
Yeah, I mean.
Let, Ian and then you.
Look, like the rest of the board, you, you don't wanna think that somebody comes in with an application and then changes what we think. an application and then changes what we think are the beneficial parts and, and get everything you want. And actually, after hearing you speak and even hearing you come before, I believe that you're not doing that. I believe that things just changed. It sounds like frankly, you might have known better than to do the bioswales and you were trying to save money. I, I'm not an expert on the situation, but I would wonder if actual, you know, leaders going into dry wells with filters doesn't do a better job.
It does.
Because the, the problem, the, the problem with stormwater, especially with such a big building, is the amount of water coming off that roof. If a bioswale is not functioning right, you're not going to contain your stormwater.
You're going to flood everything.
And you're not going to contain, I, I'm not an engineer, I don't know...
You're going to flood everything.
Actually, but...
That's what you're going to do, you're going to flood everything.
If, if you do have everything contained in the parking lot with only certain ways out that go through your dry wells that are filtered and maintained, that very well could be a better solution, I'm, I'm not sure. But, I appreciate Kathy's concern and everybody else's. And again, we don't want to think that somebody comes before us, gets everything they want by throwing us a few bones, and then come back and take the bones away. But, but again, I, I don't, I don't believe that's what you're doing. And I think that you're, I, I think that there's a way for us to come up with a good solution that makes sense to everybody. As far as the fence, you know, coming in, I don't think there's any benefit to you, so I take you at your word that somebody wanted it, whether that be authority or not, is, is not hugely important. And I think frankly, by, the drainage rings are going to be covered with, with grass, as you say, and...
Or whatever...
Whatever, right. It's going to take up less space ultimately than the bioswales. So, perhaps with the, with the, the, you know, trees that we lost by moving the fence in, you can revegetate around the dry wells.
That's what I suggest.
And we can make up for that. And, you know, we still have, I, I think ultimately, you might contain your stormwater better, still have, you know, water infiltration that, that works and functions properly. And, and I think that Eric, if you meet on site, we can probably come up with a solution where we have the same amount of, whether it's technically uncleared land or not, I'm not sure, but trees and, and shrubbery and green area. We also have a drainage system that works. You know, my biggest concern, and, and the ingress egress issue too. Again, you know, we like pavers, we don't like a lot of ins and outs. I get it, it sounds like you got on site frankly and realized it was going to be really hard to get around. And as somebody who is, has to get things around sometimes...
Dangerous.
I, I understand.
Got two ways, right there now.
We would love it if you came the first time and knew exactly what it's going to look like. I, I understand that maybe you didn't. And so, changing that, I, I, I'm okay with that. The propane tank, I think, as everybody's alluded to, and certainly Eric did, I don't think we can approve it in the right way, and I wouldn't want to. So, find, find a place for it where it's unobtrusive, where it doesn't increase your coverage, and can easily be removed if you get natural gas. And it sounds like you guys had a good lead. Yep, and so, I would, I would support that.
And we'll still protect it.
And it's going to be easier than going before Steve Lynch and the town board. And, and to Jameson's point, I think with all of this, I, we should, on the regular, if we're doing stuff at the airport, notify the airport manager in a way where he's, clearly we want his feedback, and the town board members or anybody else who wants to have, you know, to stay abreast of, of the issues. So, ultimately, I can, I can support what you're doing. I will say with the, the drainage, as I said before, I worry a little bit about these filters that we all love, and, and I do too, because like the bioswales, if they weren't maintained, if those filters stop working, the problem is really bad in that you're not containing your stormwater at all, and all the pollutants that were supposed to be filtered out are just running onto your neighbor's property. So, I think that's something we should think about in general when we recommend them, to make sure that there's some sort of maintenance plan and people are going to stay up on that, because the dry wells in the ground, if the leaders don't work, aren't, aren't doing anything. So...
Let's get Kim Shaw to weigh in on that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Let's have Kim look at the bioswales and the filters and have her opinion.
I am no expert, I would love to get more expertise.
I know, but everybody needs to hear it.
So, so ultimately, I think, if you're, if you're willing to do the revegetation...
Absolutely.
And you replace, and it sounds like you are, you probably can find the spaces with this new plan to get as much as you had before, still the site function as you want, and, and I think I'd be satisfied.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to repeat, and just briefly repeat what a lot of the other members on the board said about all of these issues. But, I do want to make one point, and this really is with regard to what Kathy was saying. And, you know, I think what happens, and I certainly, as a board member, hope to act in this way going forward. And this is, you know, this is not specific to this particular application, but this is representative of this issue. I think what Kathy was saying is that what tends to happen is these applications come in, they get changed for one good reason or another, and then the thing that suffers, the thing that gets compromised is water quality, instead of compromising the project. Because we feel sorry for the builder, we feel sorry, you know, things happen, circumstances. And then, once that happens, it happens again, it piles up, and then we need to stop doing that. Because water quality now is, in my eyes, and in a lot of people's eyes in this town, is utmost, utmost importance. So, you know, going forward with this project and all other projects, I think if we need to compromise, it's going to have to be done towards the project and not the quality of the water. Now, with regard to the, all the other issues, I think the direction that you got by, in moving the fence in, I don't know what happened there. I don't know if, if the airport manager suggested to you that, that needed to be done, but it was up to you then to come to, in front of the planning board, to, to get that approval. You can't just say, well, he gave me the approval and I can do it.
I, I can't, I can't speak for Jim. I know what we were told at the onsite, that we were to coordinate all of his fire access and perimeter roads with him, all of the fence placements with him and his people, and that, and that's what we did. I mean, that, that we had to re, we had to rework the perimeter accesses for the TSA scannings, you know, the, the circulation that goes on all day long. I mean, that we cut in a row...
Yeah, but you can't just forget about the planning board's function and all that.
Yeah, no, you coordinated, but you coordinated with him in isolation, and that's what, that's what Lou is saying. It's got to be, it can't just be just him, it has to be us two.
In defense of Jim, we did what we were asked, what we were instructed to do.
I understand. Yeah, and that's something we have to, we have to tighten our policy.
And ultimately, our hands, our hands aren't tied. We don't have to grant this modification.
Yeah, that's...
But, I mean, I, I think that we think about what, if that's the right thing or the wrong thing to do.
You know, I mean, we're willing to mitigate this, and it makes sense.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your flexibility, and I appreciate your, you know, you're willing to do all of these things. And just to, you know, hit upon all the points that everybody else made, I think the revegetation is important. So, and also, again, I'm not an expert, like Ian said, he's not an expert on what's better with regard to the drainage. But, if you work it out with Kim Shaw, I'm just repeating a lot of the things that everybody already said, I think that's, so, that's important. So, the revegetation, the, the filtering, the drainage, all that is important, and that needs to get worked out in a proper way.
I think, I think what you're hearing is that everything, all the issues that are being raised can be addressed. And going forward, there needs to be greater sensitivity to, you know, our role in this, particularly since you do have other parts of the town that you're responding to, the airport, fire department, whomever.
My direction.
We, we never lost our authority here, though. He's before us now, I get it, we would have liked to have him beforehand, but I don't, I don't think we need to be punitive.
No, 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 I don't want that.
I don't think we need to grant anything that we think is a bad plan. So, if we think this is a bad plan, we don't need to grant it. But, I, I think that what you're saying is reasonable.
I will say regarding to the drainage, I mean, I, there has to be some way to monitor the filters, if that's the way you're going to go, rather than the bioswales.
The telltale, the telltale is...
No, I know what you're saying, it backs up.
Yeah, the telltale is, at the curb inlets, which is the redesign on this, there's a filter. You'd see it immediately if, if it wasn't running through the filter. The, 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 all of the roof diaphragm, 100% of the roof diaphragm is, is directly piped into the bioswale, into the rings.
And that's exactly my concern. But, that's exactly my concern. It is such an enormous roof.
Right.
It's such an enormous roof.
But, it's, that's what these, that's what, the gallonage hasn't changed.
No, but, what I'm saying is that if you, but, but you're, you're, the method of getting the water down is...
And we're at it some last...
So, you're, you're saying the roof wouldn't need to be filtered, it's the parking lot that would have more...
The roof has always been direct.
It's all going to, listen, you know what happens? We have these enormous rainstorms, they're very fast, they're, they're very, you know, heavy. I, I guess what needs to happen is you have to have protocols to make sure when these things happen, that you're not going to let it build up. And I'm sure, listen, I'm not telling you anything that you don't know already, because you don't want to have a, a situation where you're getting damaged from, you know, excess water runoff. So, it's just that, you know, if you're talking about filters versus the, the, the natural, I don't call it naturally, but the bioswales, maybe it just needs to have a better eye on it, or, or plan to have a better eye on it.
My responsibility.
Yeah.
It's okay, it's my responsibility, and we'll take it. And so, if we have a consensus here, can I work with Eric to...
That's what I want to find out right now.
Revegetate and...
The next step here is we find out how much of a consensus we have, so...
Sam, I just want to ask a question. Eric, do you recall what we did on the, the groundwater manage, groundwater protection standards as far as the floors in this building?
Yeah, there was a unique situation where, and Tom Hallow is looking into it as well currently, but there was a unique situation where the floors, normally we pitched the, the floor to the center, because of the back that they're stacking, the pod units, re-high, that couldn't be done. But, I believe that the resolution with Tom, that basically the design, so that around the perimeter, you had a barrier, and then you're going to use the standard epoxy building that wouldn't leak through. So, it was addressed by Tom, but I think he, once the building is totally completed, like, he wants to do an inspection of it, just to double check what he does.
Okay. So, that's, that's some additional...
Yeah, yeah, that's a layer of protection. So, all right. So, are the proposed, going right from number one, are the proposed changes to drainage control acceptable? And I think it's probably best if we, you know, go around the table. So, Sharon, it's all your first.
Well, I mean, I'd love to get an opinion from Kim Shaw, but, um...
Well, you know, that actually might be the best answer, all around.
I think we did...
I think that was mentioned by somebody else, but I think, you know, I think the filtration's, yeah.
I mean, back, back...
What is the question for her?
What's the best way to filter the water?
Yeah, my question...
I can tell you what she's going to say.
I know, but apparently, other people need to hear from someone else.
What, what, you think she would say bioswales compared to the filtered?
Yes. The natural vegetation is well-known to filter, do, perform a better filter, filtration job than bioswales with filters. It's just a different kind of a, it's a different kind of thing. It's why, it's, it's why, you know, scallops and clams, oysters clean the water. You can't put filters in the water that do the job that the natural, you know, that nature does.
I would say that I'd like to get Kim's opinion, taking into consideration what the applicant has stated regarding his concerns about the impact on the bioswales of asphalt breakup. Is that the, that the best way to characterize it?
Well, I also think, I also think that, that, I think what he's saying about the functionality is really an engineering question. So, I think that Tom, Tom...
Oh, you're Tom?
Yeah, because, because they may filter better when they're functioning.
Tom already looked at this. I think, I think, you know, Kim's a savvy person. She's done a lot of this work. Why don't you just sit down with Kim and get an opinion from her? Maybe the asphalt jobs are not going to be as much of a problem as we think they are. Or maybe there's some kind of a screen that can...
What I'm, what I'm saying is, the problem, the problem would be then, the bioswale design is to actually make the water run towards the edge of the property, towards these bioswales. And if they'd stopped functioning from an engineering standpoint, the water isn't going to be filtered or absorbed through them at all, it's going to spill outside of them. And that would be my concern.
I understand, but it's the responsibility of the person that owns the bioswale to make sure it's functioning. You know, that's how, that's how it works. This is, this is a...
Yeah, I just question whether...
It's a maintenance responsibility, no matter whether you have a bioswale or you have a drain with a filter. Both of them require some maintenance.
Can you put together a question that we would be able to propose to Kim that takes into account the applicant's concerns regarding the bioswales, so that we can...
Me, or Eric?
No, I mean, plan it.
Eric, okay.
Start getting the business of reviewing site plan applications.
Okay, well, that's a good point.
Why, why don't we just schedule something outside, well...
I met with her on this subject back when we looked at this. She said that there are certain situations where she thinks by, uh, filters make sense and certain situations where they don't. And this was, now I'm, I'm thinking, you know, that...
Maybe we can ask her again, because matter of matter articulated before us, I think that really would be...
Especially if he's had a, had a, you know, an onsite challenge to doing it the way he proposed, if she, you know...
I think that's, I think that's the best thing.
I think part of it...
Propose it to Kim, but make sure that Kim understands that the question is coming about because, it's not just a, I hate this phrase, binary choice of one or the other, it's a, a choice of what makes the most sense, given the concerns that the applicants expressed.
Well, I think we've got a situation here where you're saying you don't have room for the bioswales, even if they were the better choice.
Well, that has to do with...
The bioswales, no, in all fairness, to address that, the bioswales were designed to, in theory, on a clean white piece of paper, if everything is functioning 100%, take the same amount of gallonage that the rigs are.
Right.
It's just a different process.
But they, but they're a bigger disturbance of the site. I mean, they give you less room to, for circulation.
I, I think it's a good idea. You know what? Let's, let's not get ahead of that, of that question, because that, that may be the reason that the question comes up. But, now it's here, and I think it's, I think it's in all our interest to have Kim's opinion on it.
I think as long as we don't hardscape the top and, and the water still is...
What I would suggest is, 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 let's, let's pose it to her and see what she says, and then you can, you know, say, you agree hopefully, or that, you know, maybe you don't agree, in which case, fine, we'll, you know, go on to the next, take it to the next step. All right. Should the, should the unimproved portions of the property be revegetated as recommended by the planning department, and should a revegetation plan be submitted?
Yes, yes.
I think the applicant is okay with that, and we are all on board with it.
Happy to do it.
Thank you. Is secondary access point acceptable? That's actually another good question. Is a secondary access point acceptable? I, I...
It sounds like it was necessary.
I said, that strikes me. Is anybody, Kathy, are you on board on that?
It's not, you understand it's not an access point?
Yeah, the way that...
It's an egress?
Yeah, right, right, oh, it's strictly an e, you're right, yes.
50%, it's not, because of the tightness of the site, it's 10%.
Oh, I know that, there you go. Okay. Kathy, did you have something on that?
I don't love it, but, you know, I'm outvoted, I think, so...
Did we, did we get, did Tom look at this too?
Yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely.
He did, okay.
Improve traffic flow, if you take a look at Tom's...
Okay.
And then finally, should the superintendent of highways be contacting, going to the proposed And then finally, should the superintendent of highways be contact, contact with regard to the proposed temporary propane tank? And.
Oh, we're gonna relocate.
We're gonna relocate, so we no need to do that.
Minimize the brain damage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 I was.
Seriously.
Well, that doesn't say it, we have questions that are presented, and if we wipe them out as we're going through it, then we wipe them out, which is great, all right, so.
I'd like for the board, I'd request that the board put it in somebody's, Tom's and Eric's hands, so that I can just get it done and, and move on, we're looking at winter, or.
No, 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 I, I understand, you wanna get this, so you have a, a window?
You know, I'm not trying to cut anything short, you, you've got basically a reasonably open checkbook, we're willing to revegetate the surfaces and add the trees back, no matter who moved the fence for whatever purpose.
Right.
You know, so, that's really the bottom line.
You're required to do that, that's not a big favor, you're required to do that, so thank you for offering, but that's, that's your responsibility.
Okay, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna narrow issues here, and that's one of the purposes of what we do, so, all right, thanks very much, so, uh, Eric, you'll circulate that and.
Do you wanna written, us to prepare something written?
Something so that Kim has some guidance from us.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you wanna send it?
And maybe Andy, Randy is on, on committee, uh, maybe you wanna just have a role in that.
Run it past Randy and, and me.
Yeah, and I, I think we're talk, we're talking about, uh, planning department and Kim, right, we're not, is the, is the applicant included?
Something verbal, do you think?
No, 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 I'm thinking, I'm saying, is the applicant included in this discussion with Kim, or you?
You should do that stuff in-house, and then the applicant can get a copy of the.
Fine, that's, that's fine.
That's the idea, that, that he can say either he's on board with it, or he thinks it's, you know, whatever his comment might be.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that's.
I'm happy to look at the question, but I think.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea, run it past Randy and also pass me, and, you know, if we think it needs a little tweaking, we can do that, and we'll get that done very quickly.
Thank you for consideration.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, okay, we are done with our work session, we have, uh, two.
I'm, I'm missing Spurber, I was trying to line up my stuff here, but I don't, I don't have Spurber.
Spurber?
Approval.
I heard you say it, so I looked at mine.
I don't have it in my packet.
You know, I don't think.
It's not up next, but I don't have it in my packet, it's on the agenda, so.
All right, well, let me just take care of these two board of review issues.
I just wanted to.
All right, there's, there's two boards of review, or board of reviews, or however it is, plural is, um, one of them is, um, uh, nineteen debut, we've received some comment from the public on that, and, uh, you might wanna, it came in today, uh, and so you. No, yeah, I'm, I'm sure you didn't, I, I only got it before the meeting.
It was on here.
Um, it came in at, it came in at, you know, four in the afternoon, but the point is that, um, leaving aside the comment from the public, and I would like you all to look at that, 'cause usually we don't have comments at all on these boards of review, uh, there appears to be in the board of review document an error, so, uh, we've received, you should also take a look at, uh, council, um, uh, responded to the member of the public, uh, and, uh, so. Do we have that? It, it's available here, and it'll be, um, will it be in everybody's?
Yeah, I can get it to everyone.
Yeah, well, it'll.
Well, what happened was we were trying to address the underlying question that was proposed by the member of the public, but when John and I were looking, we had very little time, but we were trying to look at the tax map and the, and the town's resources, GIS and, and govern, there's a, uh, it's not a typo, we don't think, but there is a, uh, confusing tax map number situation, I'll just put it that way. The tax map, when you look at the actual Suffolk County tax map book, there are certain numbers that look like they're associated with these subject properties, but they're not the same as what was on the, the board of review, we thought maybe it was a typo, but in govern, those tax map numbers match what is in the board of review, so it could be a tax assessor issue, but we didn't want to, we didn't have enough time to get a full.
Those are wait.
Bottom line is, we're not gonna deal with it now.
I think we should wait, because if, even if the underlying, um, concerns could be eas- more easily addressed, John looked at it, and he thought that there was a pretty straightforward answer to address it, if we adopt this resolution, it's going to potentially be amended because there's.
Yeah, so we'll, so we'll table it.
So it's tabled, that's tabled.
Yeah, it, it shouldn't take too long to figure it out, but.
You know, and, and, and these Suffolk County tax maps, numbers, you know, we see them here, like, I'm gonna read the next one, but there's a string of zeros in nearly all of them, and I, I was working on one today in my other life, and, uh, you, you could very easily make a mistake with those zeros floating around, so, with that, the next, uh, board of review, the other one that we had on today is, um, at the request of, uh, Dina Z- Zanger, uh, for a building permit at nine, Front Street in Springs, map three sixty-five, block two lots one seventy-five to one seventy-eight, portion of Lauer Street, uh, in U R P four, uh, in S P two dash one, and here's the tricky part, Suffolk County tax map number three hundred dash fifty-nine dash three dash nine point one, and again, that's eliminating all the zeros that seem to surround those numbers. Uh, the undertaking is in the sum of fourteen thousand four hundred dollars, and I, uh, move for the approval of this board of review.
Second.
Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's passed and carried. Okay, now we move on to the final items, do we have Spurber, or is that, uh? Okay, so, we, we can hope, we don't have Spurber, okay, and we'll have it in two weeks at our next meeting, I would imagine, okay, wait, yes, we have a meeting, no meeting next week, so, but two weeks, we will be back in, uh, is that? All right, so, number, number one on the plate is Round Swamp Farm.
We did that.
We did that one, okay, you're right, we did, all right, Peconic Land Trust Farm Storage Building.
Okay, in the matter of the application of Peconic Land, oh, you guys have to.
No, I can just say it.
Oh, that's right, you just don't, you just, yeah, you're just, right, right, right. Uh, in matter of the application of Peconic Land Trust Farm Storage Building Site Plan, Suffolk County Tax Map Number three hundred dash one four nine dash three dash three point four for a site plan approval, including all, um, uh, conditions therein, I've read the resolution and move for its adoption.
Is there a second?
This is the, this is the barn.
Yeah, Farm Storage Building.
But there's a second barn storage building, this is the one, um, by the, by the balsam farm stand, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, second, yeah.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? One recusal. Passed and carried. Next is, um.
That's me again.
You again, Verizon Wireless at Waynescott Northwest Road.
Right, in the matter of the application of Verizon Wireless at Waynescott Northwest Road, Site Plan Special Permit, Personal Wireless Service Facility, Suffolk County Tax Map Number three hundred dash one eight zero dash one dash eight point five, um, excuse me, uh, resolution amend, excuse me, resolution amending approval, I've read the resolution and move for its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, passed and carried, and finally, Lou, yours, Hostway and Site Plan.
Yeah, um, just before I read this, uh, this is that, I just wanna ask about, uh, again, I don't, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, and I know we went over this over and over, uh, but we did, we, you know, Joanne found the, uh, plan that was signed by the engineer, uh, which one was it, Wallbridge? So, and, and it's, 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 it cites that there are tanks on the property, so it shows that there aren't, uh, large capacity cesspools, but, um, I still think that we should make it part of the procedure to have a county stamp plan, and I don't see that as a burden, but I did wanna ask, the, uh, all of the items that are required for a site plan review that are required by the applicant, are those items listed in the code? Is there a code section that?
There is a code section with requirements, we, we usually go through and pick out the relevant ones, because sometimes they're, they may not be relevant to the type of application that we're reviewing, so, but sanitary.
But there is a comprehensive list, and, and what I'm asking for is not on that list, so.
Of the health department's stamp.
Yeah, okay, so, all right, so even if we decided to make that part of the requirement.
Higher power would have to, uh, be heard.
Have to.
Not a higher power, but another, a different authority.
Different board.
They have to.
You have to consult with the Pope on that. All right, so, all right, so I'm gonna read this now, uh, in the matter of the application of Hostway and Site Plan, Suffolk County Tax Map Number three hundred one sixty-six dash six dash two, comma, three, the resolution amending approval revised, I've read it and I move to approve it.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Sorry.
Oh, I thought you were seconding it.
That wasn't me seconding, that was me inquiring.
Second question mark?
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed and carried, and, uh, we, that, that leaves us with the minutes.
Um, the minutes are, they're usual extraordinary selves, thank you, Jody, I'd like to move to accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you wanna talk about the, what the solar energy law, you did that already?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I missed that, so.
I, I gave it, we're gonna do homework, and.
Oh, right, the homework, yeah.
It'll be on the, uh, agenda next week, yes, two weeks.
Two weeks, that's.
Two weeks, two weeks, so, it is now eight forty-seven, may I have?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Aye, aye, aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, folks.
Aye, aye, aye.
Anybody hungry?